Good evening and thank you for attending the May seventeenth special meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. A roll call, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, you'll be lining up behind the podium where we'll, where we'll, where, when we're, when we are accepting public comment. Um, if you are logged on to Zoom, click raise your hand when it is time for public comment. And if you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. And when it is your turn, we will be, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. So we will be taking the in-person public comment first and then moving to the online Zoom comments. And we won't be going back and forth. So just be sure that if you are wanting to comment remotely, that you've got your hands raised. Um, or your star nine pressed, um, as soon as public comment is requested. And for those that are wanting to comment in person, when we reach that point of the meeting, I will announce the pub, public comment time and ask that you line up behind the podium. Um, please note that as a special meeting, there is no early oral communications or an opportunity to make comment on items that are not on this agenda. So we will be having, um, one public comment time and that will only be for agenda items. So that takes us into new business, um, item A corrective preventative and/or remedial actions. The city may take in response to April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two investigation report concerning allegations of sexual harassment. Made against Councilmember Brett Watson. Can we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Uh, I am going to introduce, um, our special, uh, employment attorney. Thomas O'Connell, he comes from the law firm of Best Bestin Krieger, and I'm just simply going to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Ms. Diamond. Uh, good evening. My name is Tom O'Connell. I'm an attorney from Best Bestin Krieger. I'm an outside, uh, labor council that's been retained. By the city and by, uh, Irma Parsak Sierra, which is your JPA, essentially an insurance carrier. Um, I'm going to present to you a short, uh, staff report in front of you. You should have several pages of a staff report that include recommendations. That the council may take in response to the investigation report that you received on or about, uh, April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And strike that, um, that was published on April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, the investigation report indicates that from December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one through January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the investigator identified and interviewed seven witnesses and retained approximately five hundred pages of documentation. Um, after, uh, those interviews and retaining that, those documents, it reached out to Mr. Watson. And he was not interviewed as part of this after three months of trying. Um, Mr. Watson is still free to participate in the investigation if he so chooses. Um, but the investigator, after attempting to interview him for almost three months, chose to conclude the investigation and reach her findings. Um, the relevant findings are that Mr. Watson, and I, I like to quote just so that there's not. Any mistakes here, is undisputed that Watson engaged in conduct attributed to him by, uh, the unnamed employee. And that his conduct was motivated by romantic interest in the employee. It is also undisputed that Watson abused his power as a city council member by expecting employee to spend time with him outside city hall. To respond to his calls and text messages outside of regular work hours, to engage in communications of personal nature with him. And to hug him each time they met in his capacity as a council member and her capacity as employee. The credible evidence presented during the investigation establishes by preponderance of the evidence that the allegations against Watson are sustained. Before you tonight are corrective actions that the, the council may take in response to the investigation. Um, I am not here to speak to whether or not, uh, any of the allegations within this investigation report are true or unfounded. Um, I was not the investigator there as part of this. I rely on the investigator to do her job and to do it well. Um, she is a professional and she has relied on, again, seven interviews plus over five hundred pages of documents. Just for clarification, the staff questions tonight will be directed to me and to Ms. Diamond, but primarily to me. There are no other people here that can speak to the staff report. The available corrective actions, um, under normal circumstances where a allegation of sexual harassment or hostile work environment is ongoing or sustained. The available corrective actions are very different than what you have with the council member. Um, as noted in the staff report, this would typically involve something along the lines of suspension or administrative leave with pay. That's not available here. Um, what is available here, and I'll refer the council to packet page six, is training for the council member. Um, public admonishment to the council member, censure of the council member, limitations on the council member's activities. Such as removal from committees and other assignments and/or limiting access to safe facilities except during regular business hours. And not a council action, but a public action, which would be recall of the council member by public. I provided you with information regarding the censure process, if that's what you choose to do. I've also provided you with it, information regarding limitations on Councilmember Watson's activities, if that's what you decide to do. Of all of those, the, the recommendations that I've provided to council to ensure that such actions, true or not. Um, do not occur in the future is a restraining order. Are there any questions from council regarding this? And my understanding is that the mayor, um, you'd like to go for a, a round robin format two times through before public comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just thought, um, you know, um, considering the situation, it would just be important to keep it as orderly as possible. So we'll just do. Um, we'll take a couple of trips down the dais with questions and then turn it over to the public for public comment or input. And then we'll take it back to us for, we'll just continue to do the round robin style until, um, there are no more, no more questions. And someone is ready to move on and make a motion if that's the way that it goes down.
Understood.
Alright, so let's go, we'll go ahead if you're ready for, for questions.
I'm ready for questions, yes.
Councilmember Matthews, if you'd like to go first.
Sure. Thank you for being here. Um, I don't have very many questions. Um, the one I have is, could you, for the benefit of the public? Retrace the steps that you, that the investigators took to engage Mr. Watson?
Absolutely. Um, if you turn to the staff report, um, there's actually a paragraph that's quoted from the investigation report. It says Watson was not interviewed as part of the investigation. Efforts to secure his participation began on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. When the undersigned sent Watson's attorney, Amelia Burrows, an email requesting to schedule Watson's interview at a mutually convenient date and time. On February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, Burrows advised that she was no longer representing Watson. On February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Watson's new attorney, Linda, I'm not going to get the name right. Mittling, um, contacted the undersigned and on March first, two thousand twenty-two, after exchanging several emails in an effort to schedule Watson's interview. Mittling notified the undersigned that she no longer represented Watson. On March eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the undersigned learned that Watson was represented by attorney Alan Furpo. Council for the city communicated directly with Furpo to attempt to secure a date for Watson's interview. By March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, Furpo notified the city's attorney that she no longer was representing Watson.
Thank you.
Council, uh, Vice Mayor Schaefer?
I have no further questions at this time. I'll wait till after we hear a little bit from the public.
I actually don't have any questions. So Councilmember Watson?
Is this report a legal document?
I'm not sure how you would define a legal document, but the report is a public document as it was retained from the investigator directly by the city.
Okay, so it's not a legal document?
That's not what I said.
But you didn't say it was that.
Well, legal document could, this actually, this report could be defined as a legal document.
It could be.
Is that four questions?
I mean, it's a, it's a yes or no question.
Yes.
Okay, it is legal document.
Any document could be defined as a legal document, sir.
This one defined as a legal document?
Okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just asked a question. It's a yes or no question, sir.
I said it could be defined as a legal document.
So you're just giving the kind of classic attorney answer. You're not really answering the question?
Okay.
It's okay.
We're, we're just going to do one at a time, so.
Okay, one question at a time?
Yeah. So, uh, Meredith, do you have another question?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilmember Matthews and, um, Vice Mayor, okay, I'm good as well. Go ahead with one more.
So in your professional opinion, as an attorney that deals with a lot of this stuff, do you believe that I'm guilty of, of the allegations?
Mr. Watson, I'm not here to render an opinion about this. And given the fact that you were represented by council, I can't provide you with such direction. You have your own attorney that you can speak to regarding the investigation report.
Alright, thanks. Oh, and I'll just say actually really quick, um, if I could respond to the interview, um, question about me not getting interviewed? So, uh, what actually happened was in January, the investigator contacted my attorney. And my attorney told the investigator that I suffer from really bad attention deficit disorder and high levels of anxiety. And it's very difficult for me to answer questions in the moment. So we requested the questions in writing. And all this was not included in the report, by the way. We requested questions, we requested questions in writing and that I would respond in writing. And then I would do an in-person interview where the investigator could ask follow-up questions. So I'm told that's basically what a deposition is. And the investigator then sent an email that he got from the city staff. Saying that, well, you say your handshake because your medications make your handshake. So how are you going to possibly type it? Which is a ridiculous answer. I can dictate it. I can have somebody else type it. So in my opinion, the investigator refused me reasonable accommodation. I asked for a very reasonable request. And so a couple of months passed, this happened several times with different attorneys. And a couple of months passed, and I believe the third week of March, you just said three months, the investigator tried. And you cited the date of January twentieth as the first. So two months later, not, not three, I sent an email to Danette, the assistant city manager. Saying, tell, tell the investigator I'm available and they can contact me anytime. Here's my phone number. So I have that email. And then again, on April fifth, I saw Danette in the office and I told her, I haven't been contacted by the investigator. Let them know I'm available. So I made significant efforts to be interviewed. And now this investigator has already determined to be guilty. So I'm going to give an interview to a biased investigator who's already made findings that I'm guilty. It's ridiculous.
Okay, so now we'll go to public comment. So if you are here in person, um, you're going to want to line up, um, over by the podium, um, in the wall. And now is the time to do that. And you can make, so we'll go with the in-person people first, and then we will go to our online folks. And you will each have, um, three minutes. And as per our usual meeting protocols, the council will not respond to individual comments. But I just wanted to, um, to say that, you know, the past seven months have been extremely challenging. And the council has worked really hard to maintain a professional and respectful tone during our meetings. And so in this moment, I just ask that, that you all do the same. So, thank you.
Do I just introduce myself and go?
Alright.
Uh, my name is Jessica Silva and I'm a resident of Arcata. I wanted so badly to come up here and give Brett Watson a piece of my mind to say something so logical and so cutting that he'd get the significance of his actions. And resign from the city council like so many of us wish he would. But I don't think he can hear any of us over the sound of his narrative. So what I have to say is to everyone else who read his response to the city's investigation. The response in which he claims to be the victim, the harassed, and most egregiously blameless of sexual harassment, due in part to the implied consent from baked cookies. During times when the public tries to play expert at determining what's appropriate behavior for victims. From the Amber Heard and Johnny Depp libel trial to a few years ago, when another problematic Brett, Brett Kavanaugh, was accused of sexual misconduct by Dr. Blazi Ford. It is important for us to know that victims will behave in any number of ways to cope with the trauma of their abuse. There is no one size fits all response to harassment. In the two thousand eighteen study cited by Dr. Jimilla Bowman-Williams, professor of law at Georgetown University, seventy-six percent of sexual harassment victims did not report their harasser. Quote, "Many victims fear retaliation or think that nothing will change, concerns that may be heightened when the perpetrator holds a position of power." This is no different for government officials who may use their title as a pass to harass, end quote. Sometimes victims appease their harassers or downplay the harassment or silently, silently retreat into themselves, hoping it will just go away. And yeah, sometimes they bake their harasser cookies, maybe in an attempt to keep the peace and not be retaliated against by having spontaneous closed session performance reviews? Who knows? Complying with repeated requests for uncomfortable lingering hugs and during COVID, mind you. Off-hours texts and, and phone calls and inappropriate conversation about unrequited feelings. Requests made by the mayor at the time are not tantamount to consent. I repeat, compliance within an imbalanced power dynamic is not consent. This brave woman who did ultimately speak out after bearing this objectively awful treatment alone for far too long should be believed. I believe you. And Brett should retain whatever dignity he might have left and resign from office to save us the expense of a recall election. As a citizen of Arcata, I do not want any of our city leaders this comfortable displaying such an egregious abuse of power. And such a willfully ignorant misunderstanding of the basic principles of consent. I stand with the women on our council and the city of Arcata. I wish for the council to soon be freed from the trauma of working alongside someone so unaware of his deleterious effects on his colleagues. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and Arcata City staff. Thank you very much for being here this evening. My name is Daniel Bixler and I'm speaking just as a resident of Arcata and a voter. This is the second time I've asked Councilman Brett Watson to resign his position. The first time was in illegal and inappropriate behavior as a councilperson. I have two daughters that look up to council people and I wish that to be unstained and, um, something they can aspire towards. And that behavior was not that. That was inappropriate and illegal. The second time was abusive and possibly illegal. I'm asking city council to ask him to resign. I've asked him personally in a letter to resign. And I'm asking you to immediately pass some kind of ruling that allows for, um, impeachment when this happens. And I also urge you to begin testing for illegal drugs if you're a, an elected city councilperson. Thank you very much for your time and I wish, um, Councilman Watson good health. And I hope that he finds peace, but I don't think he's appropriate for being in a civic position. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Tamasa Daniel and, um, I'm just here saying that. I think that Councilman Watson should take responsibility for his actions. Instead of putting it on the city to pay for taking the responsibility and the cost of his actions. Uh, people mess up. You should just come to terms with what you've undisputedly have done. And let us all be at peace and please resign and take responsibility for your actions. That would show leadership. I don't think somebody with this behavior should be in a position of leadership over our beautiful city. So please, I'm begging you, resign. Take responsibility for your actions and let us all be at peace. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Wat, Matthews. Um, your department directors provided a letter dated May ten in support of your decision tonight. To take all reasonable steps to prevent and prohibit discrimination harassment. This letter represents this leadership team's unanimous support for our zero tolerance policy regarding workplace harassment. The phrase, "all reasonable steps to prevent and prohibit harassment" is quoted from this policy. I'd like to read our May tenth letter to the record because many in the public weren't, uh, able to see it before the, the packet was published. Uh, we, the undersigned city department directors are writing in support of the city's zero tolerance policy regarding workplace harassment. The policy's purpose is to affirm that the city will take all reasonable steps to prevent and prohibit discrimination harassment in the workplace. We are encouraged and support your actions to fulfill this policy by taking every possible step to prevent all continued harassment. And the negative impacts it has on city wi, citywide workplace morale and culture. We recognize the enforcement challenges related to this particular instance since the alleged harasser is an elected official. Despite these challenges, as department directors, we would like to send a clear message to the city's employees, the community, and most importantly. The subject, uh, those subjected to the harassment, that there is no place for harassment of any kind in our organization. Our leadership at every level of this organization should honor this value and express it through their actions. We also recognize that when a hostile work environment is created by a leader entrusted with power in the organization, the impacts ripple well beyond the direct survivors and witnesses. Our management team strives to create a workplace that is safe and inviting to all city personnel. We are committed to a supportive environment that strengthens and empowers staff to do their best work free from unacceptable behavior. Or pressures. Harassment and hostile work environments run counter to these efforts. We support the council ratifying this workplace culture, sending a clear message and taking reasonable, taking actionable steps that will prevent future harassment. This council action could help sustain the employee's sense of safety in the workplace. Though termination may not be an option in this citizen, instance, expressing disdain for this behavior and support for our zero tolerance policy. Sends a powerful message about our organization's culture. Lastly, we recognize the difficult position you find yourselves in. We want you to know that you have the support, take decisive action available and warranted. In closing, I'll note that the staff report outlines several reasonable steps, since permanent separation is a reasonable step that would have been taken against an employee. That violated the zero tolerance policy. Uh, these actions may seem less effective. We understand there is no mechanism to remove an elected from this kind of violation. But we encourage you to take strong action and send a strong message. Thank you.
Interesting that chose you, David, to read it because not that long ago you had harassment complaints against you. So thank you for speaking. So, thank you for speaking.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Danielle Allred. I just wanted to share my public comment that when I read the report and the allegations therein and the black and white text of what transpired between, between Councilmember Watson and the employee, it made me really upset to learn that the repercussions were so limited by virtue of him being an elected official. And that, to me, shed light on a really big statutory hole in, you know, the protections that should be in place for all city employees. Furthermore, the responses via the press release that was released yesterday indicate that there's no real remorse or acknowledgement of wrongdoing, which to me is indicative of their very warped and unhealthy notion of consent. And I encourage you to take whatever actions available to you to protect all city employees. Thank you.
Hello. I am a city employee and a resident of Arcata. I wanted to thank the majority of the council for taking this seriously. I appreciate you listening to and believing staff who have shown tremendous compassion for years, literally years, and now have had the courage to stand up and say enough. Enough of the manipulative and harassing behavior that has come to light with the recent investigation. I also want to acknowledge that there are community members who have been impacted by this issue, who are not here tonight and who, for a variety of reasons, won't be speaking about it publicly. Please don't assume that their silence means that they are indifferent about this discussion or the decisions that you are making. I would like to think that many of the people who are not speaking up explicitly are putting their complete trust in you as their elected officials to take appropriate action on behalf of the community. Thanks.
Good evening, council. Thank you for hearing us tonight. My name is Joe Mateer, I'm a city employee. And I submitted a letter and I'm going to read it for you tonight. Dear Mayor Atkins Salazar, Vice Mayor Schaefer, and Councilmember Matthews, we, the undersigned, are city employees within the confidential and management positions. We appreciate and support the May 10th, 2022, letter prepared by the city department directors regarding preventing discrimination and harassment in the workplace. As such, we support the city council's action to ensure our workplace is safe from discrimination and harassment as outlined in the city's zero tolerance policy. The policy commits the city to providing a workplace free of discrimination and harassment. The policy strongly disapproves and does not tolerate harassment and discrimination by employees, managers, supervisors, coworkers, clients, vendors, committee and commissioner members, as well as the city council members. The policy states the city will take all reasonable steps to prevent and prohibit discrimination and harassment in the workforce. We support the council taking all available steps to ensure the city's workplace is free from further harassment. A strong response from the city council will send a clear message that harassment is not condoned in the city's organization and will not be tolerated. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration in reinforcing the city's zero tolerance policy. A supportive work environment creates an atmosphere to better serve our community. Sincerely, Joe Mateer, Jennifer Dart, Dila Freitas, Morgan Sefick, Kayla Johnson, Darcy Quinn, Bridget Dory, Christine Sino, David Case, and Leah Valdiva. I would like to thank the council for taking this as an agenda item. That is a bold step. As indicated, they're limited steps, but we do appreciate them taking the time to consider the actions to, you know, not condone the, the behavior. And as stated by several community members, the position that you hold is looked up by, you know, very, various community members. And I think it's important for the city council to take action that is appropriate. I'd really like to thank the directors for stepping up to the, and writing their letter and supporting the employees that may not feel willing to speak out on this topic here. So certainly appreciate them taking the leadership role and supporting their staff. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm here today in solidarity with the city employee, with the city of Arcata staff and the rest of the council who are all navigating a sickening situation. I, I truly don't know how else to describe it. I'm, yeah. I read the report and I, like many people did, and there was definitely things that really struck me. And so I want to echo a lot of what has already been said. And I think for me, sexual harassment, and when I hear about this and when I read in, in this report, I think it really just reinforces that it's fundamentally about power and control over another. And this report reveals a pattern of abusing power from sexual harassment, including threatening the employee's job repeatedly to flaunting how the Brown Act doesn't apply to him. And this was something that struck me as a former elected official, former council member, because the Brown Act is open meeting law to ensure that elected officials conduct business out in the open and to violate that law so intentionally and with no remorse. And in fact, mocking the law is a violation in the public's trust, point blank. Communicating with others during council meetings, trying to coerce the employee to facilitate serial meetings, communicating with multiple council members outside of public meetings to try and control the council's process, and bragging about his ability to manipulate the council in his favor is a small, a very, very small part of this report. Make no mistake about it. But it is quite alarming. And, in my opinion, it casts a shadow of doubt on how decisions were made during his tenure. And I think the community needs to take that very seriously. But most importantly, I want to support the majority of this council here in using whatever tools that you can to ensure a functional and safe workplace and organization. And I know you don't have many tools. But I encourage you to use whatever makes the most sense for the community and the city to get back to the business that you all were elected to do. But we also must consider the very real possibility that he doesn't have the humility to resign and that he's up on this dais until his term ends in December. It takes incredible courage and reflection to acknowledge one's actions and seek to repair harm that has been done. And I'm not so sure we will see that here based on his response so far, which means that the suffering could continue for all of you and for this community. So I want to thank council members here that are trying to address this issue and create a safe work environment for staff and thank all the staff that have spoken out, those who maybe didn't speak today and those that are out here in the community. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Atkins Salazar and members of the council. My name is Elizabeth Connor. And I too have sat on this council and take the responsibility extremely seriously. I am here tonight to stand with our women's staff. And I believe you, and I literally had to come out and be here and stand with you. And I'm sorry this is happening. And I'm also here to personally ask Brett Watson to resign, to do yourself that courtesy and to do the city that courtesy. Aside from, I agree with the previous speaker, and it bears repeating, which normally I wouldn't do, your attitude towards democracy and your attitude towards your role on the council is horrendous. It is terrible. And it is not something we should tolerate. And we're not even talking about that tonight. You said that you felt like you didn't get a fair hearing. I want you to know that there's no other evidence that could come in that would change my opinion based on what I've already read and heard. It's enough. Nothing. In fact, after I read your defense yesterday, as a victim of sexualized violence, I was totally re-triggered and felt re-abused. And I don't want to hear any more of it from you. And new to the other women in this town who also had that reaction. I am not the only one. I don't think, I never thought I would be here asking somebody to resign. But I also want to tell the council and the, take whatever action you can, the strongest possible action. I know you will. I know we can count on you to support our staff. And lastly, I'll just say again, I want our staff to know that everyone in this town is with you. We stand with you. Thank you.
My name is Timothy Overturf. I'm a resident of Arcata. There's been much said tonight about the specifics of this case and people's interaction with you. And I can't add anymore to what's already been said, but I also agree with everything that's been said. However, I would like to appeal to you personally because I sympathize with the details that I have heard. You lost a family member. I lost my brother to suicide last year. You have ADHD, as you've said. I've been diagnosed as well. And when I'm put in situations that I cannot handle and I'm not effective, I try to give that responsibility to other people. And with everything that's transpired, I think you're ineffective to affect the will of the residents of Arcata and have a responsibility to resign. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Aiden Vayo. I'll try and keep this brief because I get anxious speaking publicly. But I, I have also had a father die recently. And I just want to say that I find your responses very tasteless. I, I don't think that, I, I think it's infantile to use grief as a shield to dodge, like, to dodge the consequences of your actions. And as a resident of Arcata, I would like you to resign.
Good evening, city council. My name is Andy Atkins Salazar, resident of Arcata. I'm here tonight to tell Brett, to tell Brett Watson his poor character, dishonest behavior, and not, is not appreciated by me, a voted constituent of Arcata. I first asked Brett Watson to resign. Brett, your dishonesty, your abhorrent behavior is despicable. Your dishonesty is apparent with this harassment case against you. I've been following your responses to this issue. The Mad River Union, January 26th, 2022, stated that the council had a closed session meeting, which you were in attendance on, on October 13th, 2021. We now know from that closed session, that closed session, that the alleged harassment was disclosed to you and the other council members. Text also revealed that at that time, you were going to resign and take full responsibility. So at that time, you acknowledged your bad behavior, but you chose not to follow through. We also know that, that that's why, that we also know that why the remaining council members took a no confidence vote against you and appointed a new mayor and vice mayor at the next, next week at the, the October 20th, 2021 meeting. At the Mad River Union, January 19th, 2022, you, you are quoted as saying the following, that nobody, emphasis on nobody, had told me what I am accused of doing wrong, or who, emphasis on who, the potential victims are. You were aware of it back in October. It's obvious from the report you are a liar. It's clear from the, from the findings of the report that you are a sexual harasser. You have no business representing me or any other citizen of Arcata. Your own words and actions corroborated by the report are clear that you harassed and I see bardenet city employee. You are a liability to the city and to the taxpayers of Arcata. Your credibility and reputation are ruined. You just need to do the only, the right thing left to do and resign. Your May 16th press release was very evident that you are delusional and suffer from mental instability. It was very classist of you to claim the victim and try to make yourself a victim. I ask the council, do whatever maximum measure you can legally do to rid us of Brett Watson. It's embarrassing having him represent us on council. I would like to thank the three remaining council members for your professionalism and dedication to the city of Arcata in spite of the distraction that is Brett Watson. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing no other in-person further, okay. So if you do, if there's anyone that wants to comment, please do line up because we'll, we'll be moving on.
Hi. My name is Kathleen Marshall. I live in Arcata, have done for a long time now. I am going to say to Brett Watson that I didn't support you from the very beginning. And my sensibilities about that has been proven by your reprehensible behavior. Now I'm going to address the rest of the city council. My feeling is that serves that type of imposed responsibility since he won't take it on himself to accept responsibility. So please choose censure. Thank you.
Okay, so now we will go to those who are waiting online. So just as a reminder, if you're logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand. And if you're on the phone, press star nine and that will raise your hand. Our first speaker is Colin. Go ahead, Colin.
Hi there, y'all. Hey, I ran for city council unsuccessfully in the last election cycle. I just wanted to say, yeah, come on, Brett. I read the 600
Colin.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, start over, Colin. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I just want to say, I ran for city council unsuccessfully, I suppose, in the, in the last election cycle. But I want to say like, I read the report and Brett, come on. Like, you can't duck this. You have to take responsibility. And frankly, it's, it's kind of, it's pretty obvious at this point that, it's rather conclusive. And you act like you have a city mandate, like, like you have the city behind you. But let's face it, you were appointed and then elected in an off-year with really not that many people voting. I imagine you and I got probably about the same amount of votes, but that doesn't mean anything either way. It's just this sort of ego thing you got to let go. And you got to recognize that this is just way out of line. You can't behave this way. It's absolutely reprehensible. I mean, I read the report and, and you, you can't do that. And, and personally, like for my own politics, I think anyone who voted against Sarah's pandemic pay raise for grocery workers shouldn't be on the city council either, but that's beside the point. Regardless, I want to say that the writings on the wall, just, no one in Arcata wants this. And for your own sanity and for, for the, for the good of the city, just resign. And, you know, go again if you got to. But come on, this isn't it. This really obviously isn't it. You can't do this. Sorry. Respect to everyone sitting up there. And I'm sorry y'all have to do this very uncomfortable business. It's probably not very pleasant. And best of luck. But Brett, come on, man. Do it. Do the right thing. Cheers. Adios.
All right, our next speaker is Colin, user one. Go ahead, Colin, user. Can you unmute Colin, user one? There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Edith Rosen. I'm a resident of Arcata. The city of Arcata has a zero tolerance policy on sexual harassment. The city of Arcata has already undergone due process in investigating this claim and found Councilmember Watson guilty of sexual harassment. Now, I've been asking myself, and I ask our city council, I ask our community, why is this even open for discussion? Why is this even open for discussion? I ask each of you council members to lead by example and to do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Aristea. Go ahead, Aristea.
Hi, I'm Aristea Salisbury. I have lived in Humboldt County my whole life and spent quite a bit of time in Arcata. This is a group letter. Brett Watson, we are women leaders who live in, work in, care about, and/or frequent Arcata. We are daughters, mothers, business owners, elected officials, and so much more. We've read the report, and we've been talking in private circles about it and the responses to it, and we're here to share. Most of us have known a Brett Watson in our lives, a man who took liberties while passing the blame on to the victims of his harassment. Most of us have experienced or witnessed the victim of harassment being left to defend themselves or only supported by whisper networks. We are done accepting men like you that treat this behavior as the norm. We know that leadership is not just about power for ourselves. We have responsibilities to ourselves, each other, and the community to use our platforms for the greater good. As such, we stand together in this letter to make a demand: You must resign. We know you probably will ignore this and countless other calls for your resignation, but this moment isn't just about you. We want the young people in our community to see that we expect more from leadership. We want them to know that we will stand with them when they meet a Brett Watson in their lives, and hopefully they will know who among us to come to for help. Local youth have bravely spoken out this year about sexual assault, harassment, and other forms of sexualized violence. They know the world is often tolerant of abuses from people with platforms, and they worry the adults of the world will not do enough to make it safer for the next generation of leaders. The youth of Arcata and the surrounding communities deserve leadership that values the safety and belonging of everyone in our community regardless of power. For the safety of current and future colleagues, especially women and girls, and to model for others what taking responsibility for your actions looks like, we demand that you resign from your position on city council. With love for our community, Amanda Pisane Hickey, Andrea Allstone, Angelica Lua, Aristea Salisbury, Alex Ozaki McNeil, Alicia Hammond, Beth Herman, Bonnie Oliver, Brittany Erez, Carla Osborne, Caroline Griffith, Cassandra Crawford, Kat Koschkin, Catherine Holloway, Chloe Iker, Cindy Vickers, Cleo Salisbury-Brock, Corey Hara, Sibel Emmett, Cynthia Bicammon, Dana Silvernail, Desiree Davenport, Dr. Kutcher Wizling-Baldy, Esther Hutton, Gail Conway, Heather Equinos, Hillary Byer, Jacqueline Dandino, Jeannie Franklin, Jen Rice, Jennifer Black, Julie Neander, Julie Ryan, Heidi Morgwinnup, Kara Simpson, Katie Koslak, Kelly Nord, Lisa Dugan, Lori Biondini, Maechelli, Martha Spencer, Mary Burke, and a friend will read the remaining names.
All right, our next speaker is Jana. Go ahead, Jana.
Terrific. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. My name is Jana Ganyan, and I'm a resident of Arcata. I really want to thank the council and the attorneys for their work here and holding this special meeting. I'll begin by saying that council member Watson, I voted for you. I took the news of your DUI with, with, not a great assault, but certainly some empathy for when these things happened. It doesn't have to derail your whole life. With this report and the obvious evidence of this chronic abuse and harassment, abuse of power in your position, I really join the others in just calling on you to resign from office and, and just stop the damage that your continuation in this role will undoubtedly cause. If that does not occur, which I sincerely hope it does, then after reviewing the recent report on council member Watson, I join the demands that Mr. Watson's role be limited, that he be removed from all duties with respect to Arcata city government for the remainder of his term, that city council immediately pursue all methods possible to implement protections for all city staff. I entirely respect the due process that has preceded this point. These investigations are tried and true methodologies to determine guilt in these situations. And just to be clear, want to support the city council to take all immediate steps to protect city staff from any further contact of any kind, implementing the full public list of actions that can be taken to censure Mr. Watson. The list of actions may also include, of course, a restraining order, a workplace violence restraining order, a temporary restraining order, lawsuits against Mr. Watson, and by other means, and/or all of the above. Further, the city council should be encouraged to immediately develop additional processes and/or legal structures to prevent this kind of abuse by a council member in the future, to include explicit prohibitions against all forms of harassment and abuse of power as conditions of taking and holding office. I'll end by saying thank you to council and staff for the amazing work, and Mr. Watson, please resign tonight. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Robin. Go ahead, Robin.
Good evening. Thank you. I am here to finish reading the list of names on the letter that Aristea read to the council. Maya Conrad, Melissa Maris, Michelle Fuller, Nadia Villa, Natalie Arroyo, Natalie Gianini, Rachel Watson, Robin Baker, Sandy Bird, Sherry Wu, Sophia Pereira, Stephanie Lumsden, Taffy Stockton, Tara Tully, Teresa Grossine, and Tiffany Mayer. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is just the initial J. Go ahead, J.
I just want to come here to echo all the previous statements made. Every other Arcata resident I have spoken to about this agrees as well. Brett should resign. His responses insinuating anything in this report was false or done in bad faith, have been delusional and insulting, and all possible actions against him should be taken immediately. Thank you.
Okay, and just last call for on Zoom. Go ahead and raise your hand or press *9 now if you have a public comment on Zoom. This will be our last public comment on Zoom. All right, no more public comment. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for taking the time for a public comment. And so we will come back to the council for further questions or clarifications from council and moving forward. So again, we will start with council member Matthews.
My entire time on the Arcata city council has been overshadowed by the actions of council member Watson. Two weeks after I was sworn in, he got arrested for a DUI. The whole council supported him during this difficult time. When these allegations were brought to us in October, we expected him to resign, but instead, we have dealt with this situation as best as we could, knowing that we could not share with the public this ongoing investigation. Meanwhile, countless hours that could have been spent doing our job were redirected to mitigating the situation. I want to make it extremely clear that this council has zero tolerance policy to any workplace harassment. The report showed clear and sustained findings that city employees were harassed and subjected many times to quid pro quo demands. No one should have to work under these conditions. I join the council to do good for Arcata, to work with the city staff to make positive changes. I want to do my job by devoting my time to that. My heart goes out to all the victims of harassment in any form, and I will take all available steps to ensure a safe work environment. We've spent enough time on this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Meredith. Or sorry, council member Matthews, I'd like to say a few words as well. As a city council, we are bound to make sure that this investigation report is taken seriously and that the actions reported within will not repeat. Under the city's anti-discrimination and harassment policy, we must, quote, affirm that the city will take all reasonable steps to prevent and prohibit discrimination and harassment in the work environment. I'd also like to read a little bit from our own city's zero tolerance harassment policy because I think it's very poignant in showing how, you know, we've gotten to this point. Whether sexual harassment has occurred depends on the conduct, not the intentions of the one accused of the harassment. The city's policy is one of zero tolerance, and this means the city's policy prohibits harassing conduct, even if it may not rise to the level of legally actionable harassment under law. The city's policy rests on the fundamental precept that each employee must treat all others with respect, dignity, and professionalism. Deviation from that standard will not be tolerated. It is not significant whether or not the offending employee meant to give offense or believed his or her comments or conduct were welcome. Rather, the city's policy is violated when other employees, whether recipients or mere observers, are in fact offended by the comments or conducts which are based on race, religion, color, gender, age, origin, ancestry, marital status, so on and so forth. According to the staff report on this item, I quote, "On April 26, 2022, the city notified Watson of the results of the investigation and requested that he immediately cease certain activities related to city staff members. Agreeing to the restricted activities would protect the complainant and others from allegedly harassing conduct by Watson and would eliminate any possibility that Watson could be accused of such activity, and would allow Watson to continue to serve in his capacity as city council member. Watson has not consented to the city's request." Unquote. In light of Watson's intention to not accept these restrictions, the council must take immediate action and protect the victims of this investigation and maintain a positive and safe work environment for all city staff. According to the investigation report, it is undisputed that Watson engaged in conduct attributed to him by the employee and that his conduct was motivated by romantic interest in the employee. It also is undisputed that Watson abused his power as a city council member by expecting the employee to spend time with him outside of city hall, to respond to his calls and text messages outside of regular work hours, to engage in communications of a personal nature, and if you read it, of a very personal nature, and to hug him each time they met in his capacity as a council member and her capacity as an employee. The credible evidence presented in this investigation establishes that the allegations against Watson are sustained. I think it is not wise to waste our valuable meeting time and resources on Watson. I was elected to represent the people of Arcata. I was represented to represent all of you and to help every citizen of Arcata, and I believe it's in Arcata's best interests to not allow Watson to take center stage and to slow down a central city business that we want to accomplish. Tonight, we've heard all of your opinion, the public's opinion on this matter, and I feel empowered by each and every one of you to obtain a restraining order and to place limitations on Watson's activities because he does not represent the city, and to protect city staff from further harassment, abuse of power, or retaliation. Thank you.
Based on the information and the report and what we have heard here this evening, my first choice would be to have council member Watson resign. A resignation is the least that he can do for the victim and for our community. In addition, the amount of valuable time and energy that has been diverted from productive city business to this situation has been monumental, and I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to get back to the business of working for our community, not managing the fallout of a situation that should have never occurred. Since up until this point, it has been apparent that council member Watson will not be resigning, we must move forward on all actions presented tonight in order to protect the victim and our city from further misconduct and disruption. Furthermore, we need to go beyond these immediate actions and, at a future meeting, put into place whatever safeguards we are able to to prevent a circumstance such as this from happening in the future.
All right, a couple things. Really appreciate everybody's, all the public comment, everyone taking their time to come here and share your opinions. Really appreciate all the council's comments. You know, this whole thing with the letter, it came from the city. So did you guys vote to approve this letter? Like, how did it come from the city?
Council member Watson, if you have a question, you can direct it to me. As you might be aware, your personnel director, Tenet Mello, has the authority to appoint outside labor council, as does Sierra, as your panel council. So through that, I represent the city.
Okay, so you're the city.
That's
It says the city.
It does.
Okay. And nobody ever said if I agreed to those terms, I'd allow to be a council member. It was pretty clear that you just wanted me to sign the letter. And I follow all those terms. That's the crazy thing. All the rules that the council members have asked me to follow, I follow, even though I don't have to, even though it's not a legal document.
Is there a question?
No, there's no question.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't
No, you're good. So... Yeah, that's all I have to say. Well, no, I have more to say, I guess. So this is time for me to talk? All right. It should be clear that at no time did I sexually proposition anyone. Also, at no time did any staff advise me that any interactions were unwelcome. For anyone who cross-references the poorly done 29-page report summary with the provided texts and emails within the 600-page report, it will be clear that much of the report comes to false and biased conclusions. There is no evidence that I ever expected anything from the staff member at issue. In the report produced by the city's own investigator, there is an abundance of evidence showing she enjoyed spending time with me, she looked forward to it, and she encouraged it. She baked me cookies, offered me food she brought from home, sent me pictures of her vacations, and she sent me unsolicited texts and emails after work hours and on the weekends. Our relationship was 100%
I feel you and I hear you. I think we all do, but I do want to, you know, to keep this professional, so let's please do that.
And just to make it clear, there's absolutely zero chance I'm going to resign. Just to be totally clear, crystal clear, right? If the person, if the staff member wants to take responsibility for her role in the relationship, I would consider it. Just so, just so to make that crystal clear. Where was I? She sent me photos of her vacations. She sent me unsolicited texts and emails after work hours and on the weekends. This is all in the report. Our relationship was 100% consensual, and we had an intimate friendship. The 600-page report is filled with this evidence, and it was completely ignored by the investigator, showing the investigator's clear bias against me. The Arcata taxpayers paid for this report and own it, so I implore you to take the time to actually read the report. I mean, by a show of hand, who read 600 pages? You all read the 600-page version?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I read it out loud.
Okay. So then, so that you're going to be able to follow along with me as I go. The Arcata taxpayers paid, yeah, take the time to read the entire report to make your own determination. There is an abundant amount of evidence that the investigation was poorly done and conducted by an investigator looking to justify a negative conclusion against me. If you don't have the time to read all 600 pages, open the report to any of the texts and emails and start reading. So just to let everybody know, you know, if you want to hang, decide if you want to hang out or not, I've timed this, and it's about 25 minutes long, just so everybody's clear. I was never notified by any legal document approved by the city council to change any of my behaviors, and I don't take direction from attorneys who have demonstrated clear biases against me. All of these actions are merely a charade to appear as if the city has acted responsibly rather than predetermined my guilt. There is not one shred of evidence showing I'm a danger to staff or anyone. The city continues to this day to violate its own harassment and discrimination policy in late January, its own discrimination policy. In late January of this year, I made a formal complaint of harassment and discrimination by the city attorney, the personnel director, and the city manager. My complaints were ignored for months. I haven't received a letter acknowledging the complaints per the city's harassment and discrimination policy, and there is only now talk of an investigation four months after I made complaints. And after the investigation into me is concluded, assuring my complaints are downplayed. Again, this is in violation of the city's own harassment and discrimination policy. These same people who have been harassing and discriminating against me were also allowed to be witnesses against me in the report and had regular communication with the investigator. Influencing the investigation, this makes no sense at all, as they have clear conflicts of interest and have shown strong biases against me. At this point, the same city attorney who's under investigation for harassing and discriminating against me was allowed to prepare the staff report. I mean, how does that make any sense? It's time the community gets a true and clear understanding of the false allegations against me and the abundance of evidence that demonstrates I've never harassed or have ever been a danger to anyone. As the investigator refused to interview me for this report, I'm going to take this opportunity to fill in the blanks and give a true accounting of events that took place. I'll start with the League of California Cities Conference in September of last year. I attended the conference I attended the conference with the staff member and a council member, and I was very...
Councilmember Watson?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, is it your intention to go through the entire report and to try to refute it? Because that would be something for the censure and not for this particular...
No, it's for this. It's on the agenda under the Brown Act. It's totally, it's clear that this is allowed. It's related to the topic. They're talking about whether or not to censure me, and I'm making an argument, why not?
No, actually, to be clear, the agenda item is not to censure you at this...
It's to consider it.
Sir?
Yeah.
Sir. I'll talk, you talk, I talk, you talk.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The agenda item is to consider whether or not to motion for a censure. At the censure hearing is where you would have the ability to present your evidence. You can see that in, actually, it's packet page seven. It goes through this. It says, for instance, providing notice to the council member of the cause of the proposed censure, placing the proposed motion, providing an opportunity for public comment, and then providing an opportunity for the subject council member to be heard regarding his or her censure. It sounds like you are addressing that particular item where that isn't actually what's on agenda.
I think you're hearing it wrong.
I'm sorry?
I think you're hearing it wrong, and I'm going to continue.
I would actually like to have the discussion about what actions we're going to take, because that is what is on the agenda here. I'd like to discuss the...
You're all trying to silence me right now.
I'd like to discuss the...
The agendized item, sir, is regarding the actions. If you'd like to...
I'm making a case why the actions don't make sense.
Let's try not to talk over each other, okay? I'll finish, and then once I finish, you can talk, okay? Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
I mean, or just let him do it. It'll just make everybody here more emboldened.
Yes. Okay. There are certain items that are on this agenda. You agree, correct?
The entire report is included in this agenda under the agenda item, giving me the right to address anything within that document.
Not sure where you get that from. The agenda says specific council direction, and it has certain measures. The censure...
Why was the 600-page report attached to it?
We're doing it again, let's...
I'm doing it. You're not doing anything. Why was the 600-page report attached?
Because the 600 report, the 600-page report has within it, and let me quote from it.
I mean, I feel like you're breaking the Brown Act right now by not letting me speak on a topic that's on the agenda.
Actually, I want to make sure that you are speaking on the agendized topic. That's actually what I'm trying to make sure that the focus of the speaking is correct.
It says it's about, you know, based off the report, because that's what I'm addressing.
So your intention...
All the information is in here.
So you're expressing that you want to have a censure so you can make this statement at that time?
No, not at all. I want to make this statement at this time. This is the appropriate time to make it.
Okay.
You're trying to silence me.
Well, no, I don't think that that's it at all. I think we want to make sure that we are actually staying on topic and for the agenda. So I just want to be clear. So the staff report has within it a sentence that says, "The investigator has identified facts and circumstances that, if true, would qualify as both quid pro quo sexual harassment and hostile work environment harassment." You see that correct?
Yeah, do you see the part where it says "A"?
Yeah, I...
Did you read that part?
Censure?
Because I think that's what matters.
Censure?
No. Corrected preventative and/or remedial actions the city may take in response to the April 12 investigation report concerning allegations of sexual harassment made against Councilmember Brett Watson. The title is what I'm entitled to address. That's the Brown Act, buddy.
Okay. Sir, I'm going to go back to my question for you.
To bring us back to the part of this where we check, we treat people with respect.
Look it up.
Are you done?
No, no, go ahead. You can go ahead, though.
So if true, what the council is considering is, if true, should the discipline go forward? It is not a refutation of whether or not it is true, which it sounds like what you're doing, which would be part of the censure hearing. Do you...
No, it's not. You're incorrect, sir. You were wrong.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to continue.
So I would say, yeah, let's go ahead and let Councilmember Watson continue. If you, you know, I think it's upsetting for some people that are here, and if you, if you don't want to stay and listen, we respect that, and it'll be okay. And if you want to stay, that's fine, too.
Thank you very much. As the investigator refused to interview me for this report, I'm going to take this opportunity to fill in the blanks and give a true accounting of events that took place. I'll start with the League of California Cities Conference in September of last year. I attended the conference with the staff member and a council member, and I was very depressed the entire time. During the last night of the conference, I became really depressed. On the drive back to the hotel, I asked if the staff member wanted to finish a bottle of wine left over from dinner before going to bed, as it was her idea to take the bottle with us from the restaurant in the first place. The council member with us did have a glass of wine at dinner, but testified she didn't. The staff member's testimony confirmed she had a glass of wine, so they contradicted each other in their interviews. The council member normally didn't drink, so I didn't ask them. I estimated there to be about two glasses of wine left in the bottle, and I thought since the staff member suggested to take the bottle with us, she would want to drink some of it. She said no, and that was the end of the conversation. I was not upset by it. It meant there was more wine for me to enjoy and to help me sleep. I had only had one glass of wine with dinner up until that point. I went to my room and became more depressed. I then texted the staff member and told her I was sad, and then I texted the council member that I didn't know if I wanted to live anymore. She wrote me back, and she said she was worried about me and asked me to sleep in her room with her. I agreed. When she opened the door to her room, it was overly obvious that she was really high. She said she had consumed some of the cannabis drink she brought with her. She then asked me to walk her to the vending machine so she could get some munchies because she was too high to find it herself. I took her to the vending machines. We returned to her room, and I went to sleep in the second bed. In the morning, she decided to text the staff member about what happened. I was still sleeping, and the staff member came over and rubbed my leg and asked if I was okay. I cried, and we talked about how I needed to get more help. We then drove home, and the staff member assured me everything was okay between us, and I should just forget about it. The staff member drove by some properties for sale to show me and then dropped me off. She got out of the car and gave me a big hug and said everything was okay between us. So the actual harassment complaint began on October 7th of last year. At 9:00 a.m., I got to City Hall and began working on an ordinance to create and enforce a rental inspection program for the city. I found several mistakes in the staff's work on the ordinance, and I brought them to the attention of the staff member. She initiated a long-term hug like she always did and asked me how I was feeling. I said I was feeling better. She said I could meet with her and another staff member assigned to the ordinance at 1:00 p.m. to ask my questions. At 12:55 p.m., I entered the staff member's office for the meeting. While we waited for the other meeting attendee, we were discussing city business, and she mentioned she had approved the installation of a baller hole in the center of the plaza so it could be used for events in the center of the plaza. Now, keep in mind, the plans for the center of the plaza had previously been discussed by the council, and it was decided it would be a council decision after holding a community meeting about it. I asked her if we had voted to approve that. She said no, but she had mentioned it at a subcommittee meeting. I said, "Subcommittees can't approve decisions," and it wasn't an appropriate decision for her to make. She became very irritated. At 1:00 p.m., we met with the staff member in charge of the ordinance and agreed there were some mistakes that needed to be corrected in the rental inspection ordinance. The staff member who this harassment complaint involves was clearly annoyed by me discovering mistakes in staff's work. This is common, as I often find mistakes in their work.
I'm going to, we're just going to pause for five minutes so we can stretch our legs and use the restroom, and then we'll come back at 7:15. Thank you. All right, thank you. Again, you know, before we get back to Councilmember Watson, I just want to say I'm sorry. I apologize that we're, that we're here and we're listening to this, but part of the reason I took the break was just to double-check on advice, and I've been advised we need to let it roll. So I think we'll just continue to let Councilmember Watson dig his hole.
Thank you, Mayor. I was first told there was a complaint against me on October 11th of last year when I met with City Attorney Nancy Diamond in her office. She told me I could trust her, and everything I told her would be off the record. After I told her about 50% of some of the events that took place, she said she actually wasn't my attorney, and I would lose a harassment complaint. She told me that the staff member had not made the complaint and that there was a witness that had come forward with a formal complaint. She then told me that if I resigned, this would all go away, and there would be no investigation, even though it would be in violation of the city's harassment and discrimination policy. The city's policy also says that when a formal complaint is filed, the complainant and the person accused shall receive a letter explaining the complaint within three days. This never happened, again in violation of the city's own harassment and discrimination policy. I was completely in shock from all of this and dealing with a lot of depression and anxiety. The first two things I did was to agree to step down as mayor, and then I called a special meeting to inform the council of the situation. During the meeting, the council members all took turns yelling at me and trying to bully me into resigning. They said if I resigned now, there wouldn't be an investigation, and I could still run for another office in the future. The city attorney interrupted and said, "Actually, there would still have to be an investigation." At first, I said I was going to resign, but then a close friend who's also an attorney told me, "Don't resign. Don't let them bully you out of a position for something you didn't do." I then decided I wasn't in good enough mental health to make such an important decision, so on October 15th, I chose to enter a 30-day rehabilitation program and make the decision when I got out. I informed the city of this that day, which they chose not to mention in the press release at that time. I entered the program on October 17th. I completed the program and decided I wasn't going to resign. I returned to my council duties on December 3rd of last year. There was no investigation at this time, and I was told by a staff member that they were waiting to see if I resigned or not, which again seemed like a violation of the city's own harassment and discrimination policy. I did not receive a letter regarding the investigation until over two months later from the investigator, not the city. So technically, the city still hasn't sent me the required letter. On December 15th, the council held a meeting. The city attorney told the council an investigator had been hired. So one question I have is, who hired the investigator? Who chose the investigator?
I'm sorry, back to a question?
Yeah. Who chose the investigator?
I believe, actually, I think this is outside my purview. I don't know who.
The investigator was chosen based on input from Sierra and Irma. Those are our insurance carriers for the risk pool. We were given a list of names. They were contacted. It was the standard practice by which the city normally conducts investigations.
So they made a recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, and then who decided to go with that recommendation?
And I'm not sure this is relevant, and I'm sorry. Yeah, you are cross-examining me, and that is not relevant to the investigation.
No. You're basically keeping information from the public.
Actually, I'll cut this off. Actually, there is good case law for this, and you can talk to your attorney. One, if you have an attorney and you'd like to ask questions to the city regarding this, you should do it through your attorney.
Okay, so you refused to answer the question. Thank you. How much did the investigation cost the taxpayer?
I don't know.
Okay, not answering that one.
No, I didn't say that. You are restating my answers, which is incorrect. No, now you're talking over me. I said I don't know, and that is different from not answering your question.
Okay. You answered it. You don't know. How many staff hours went into the investigation?
I don't know.
Well, you're not obligated to answer any questions that you don't want to. So he can ask, and you don't have to answer. That's fine. So ask and don't answer.
Why did you wait for two and a half months to hire an investigator?
Mr. Watson, again, if you'd like to ask this question through your attorney, please feel free to.
Back to the sequence of events. During the December 15th meeting, the city attorney had also drawn up behavior guidelines all on her own without any direction from the council. She then told the council they had the authority to pass the guidelines against me. She also told the council she had talked to my attorney, and my attorney agreed the council had the authority. Both of these statements were lies. I said I hadn't talked to my attorney about it, and I needed to go over the guidelines with my attorney. The city attorney said the council didn't have to let me talk to my attorney, and they could just vote on them. The vote was four to one with me voting no. me voting no. So from this point up until present day involves my harassment and discrimination complaint against the staff, the council, and the city attorney. So as they're pending investigations, I'm not going to go into details about that at this time. But circling back to the report, you know, I think in a lot of legal experts' opinions, they would tell you that it's not a legal document. It's an opinion-based, or it's a biased investigator that produced an unprofessional and poorly done document. Also, no one who has interviewed in this investigation was under oath, so they had no obligation to tell the truth. And incredibly, this report is filled with mistakes and wrong information. Here are some examples. Page 2, item 4, description of allegations. It says I was appointed in 2016, which is false. I was appointed in 2017. Again, on page 2, it says, I was applying for the Coastal Commission in late 2019, but that's totally false. I was applying in March 2019. Page 4 says I would be re-elected in 2020, which is false. My term ends in 2022. Page 15, it cites a council meeting held on September 18, 2021, as a reference point, but there wasn't a council meeting that day. The previous council meeting was held on September 1st. Again, on page 15, on the bottom of the page, it refers to Exhibit 4. However, this exhibit has nothing to do with the subject cited for. Exhibit 4 references text on a totally different topic and on a different date. So here are five mistakes about very basic information, and that's just in the first 15 pages of the report. These are just a few examples of how poorly done and how inaccurate this report is. What does it say about the rest of the report when they can't even get simple information right? Suspiciously, the staff member's emails to me are not included. They include her text, but none of her emails. Why is that? The city has not made the audio recordings of the interviews available, which are pertinent information. On page 66, the staff member talks about how she buys one of the witnesses drinks, so she says what she wants her to say. I believe there's a lot of evidence to show this report is completely unreliable. Whoever was in charge of making the redactions in this report needs to be fired. The first time the report came out, it was filled with names and personal information that weren't redacted. One example is that they failed to redact a picture of my underage nieces and nephews. It's my understanding that the first version of the report was freely distributed before this was discovered, because the last word on the report from Tom O'Connell was that it was to become a public document the next day. So that means a lot of people know the names of the person making this complaint and some of the witnesses. So again, the investigator refused to interview me, so taking some time to tell the actual version of events, this report's left out a lot of pertinent details to what happened between me and the staff member and other events throughout the investigation, so I'm going to fill some of that in. Now, I'd like to focus on my relationship with the staff member. The report said I had a romantic interest in the staff member, which is absolutely false. I've never once said to anybody that I had a romantic interest in her. We did have an intimate friendship, and what I did say on multiple occasions to multiple people was that I really cared about her and that she was really important to me, because she was. She was like a second mother and a big sister rolled into one. There are many instances of me and her referring to her as my big sister in the report. I firmly believe I would not have been able to endure the pain of my father's suicide without her. After the death of my father, she and I became very close and started spending more and more time together. Most of this time was spent on walks in the community forests or the Samoa Dunes. The report says she only spent this time with me because she felt like she had to, and I expected it. There is no evidence of this. She told me she enjoyed spending time with me and that we spent more time together than her and her husband did. When we were together, she would make these small touches on my arms while she was talking or while she was making a point. Over and over again, I would ask her if I was taking up too much time or bothering her, and she would continually reassure me that I wasn't. According to the text in this report, she loved our walks together and looked forward to them. Sometimes, I would tell her we didn't need to walk if she was busy, and she would say she enjoyed our walks because they got her out of the office and gave her exercise. On one walk, which I previously mentioned, we accidentally went off the trail and got lost. We ended up wading through dense underbrush, trying to find the trail, and she fell into a very large nest of insects. The insects swarmed her entire body and started stinging and attacking her. She made it to the road and started stripping off her clothes. I helped her get all of the insects off, and as she was putting her clothes back on, she said, "Out of all the council members, I'm glad it was you that was here with me." Here are some of the many examples from the report of her enjoying our walks. Page 283, she says, "Thanks for the time to walk today." Page 312, she says, "Thanks, it was an awesome walk, very refreshing. Hope you have a great night." Page 324, I say, "I felt kind of off all day," and she replies, "We can try to walk it through tomorrow. You seem to be accomplishing a lot through a very tough time." Page 338, she sends me an unsolicited text of a picture of our walk together on the dunes and says, "That was beautiful today. Thank you." Page 339, she says, "That was a beautiful walk this morning. Really glad we went there." Page 353, I say, "I'm really looking forward to our walk," and she replies, "I'm also looking forward to our walks." Page 370, Thanksgiving 2020, she says, "So many things to be grateful for. Our walks have been a blessing on many levels. I woke up at 4:30 a.m., and I got all of my cooking done by 7:00, lol." Page 402, she asks me, "Do you want to try the new Fickle Hill Loop tomorrow? To mix it up and mix us up, and we can try to go backwards?" Smiley face. Page 417, she says, "I look forward to walking on Friday." Page 424, I say, "I have a lot of anxiety and worry," and she replies that we'll try to walk it out. Again, on page 441, she says, "We will walk it out today." Page 447, I say, "I feel a lot better after our walk today. I appreciate you so much. I hope you rest well tonight," and she replies, "I do as well. It must be the magic of the dunes." Page 447, she's leaving on a trip, and I say, "I'm going to miss you so much. Of course, I'm going to miss her. She's my best friend. I'm very depressed, and I won't be able to see her for a couple of weeks." She then replies, "Thanks. I learned three new flowers today for us to look up when I return." Some other examples of how she felt about me, her initiating personal conversations and other comments. On page 124, she says, "Thank you for all of your support this past year. I really appreciate it." On page 202, she says, "Brett, thank you for considering staying on the council, and also know that I know you will not abandon me. I will find you at the Griffin if I need you, lol. I grow and learn alongside you. I grow and learn alongside you when we work through things, so no apologies are needed. I hope you have some fun this weekend and can unwind." Page 239, I tell her, "She's my best friend," and she replies, "I'm sure you have friends better than me, but thank you. I enjoy our walks." Page 351, she says, "You will be a great mentor and senior council member." Page 396, she says, "You're the best." On page 473, I say, "You mean so much to me," and she replies, "You mean a lot to me as well." Page 386, I say, "I feel stuck or trapped," and she replies, "Tomorrow, we'll talk about how to break through." On page 513, she initiates a conversation with me at 6:00 a.m. on a Saturday with a picture of a run. I reply and say, "Thank you. I hope you have a good run," and she says, "I'm sorry I texted you so early. I just got rolling and forgot about time. Tea times for golf look better for tomorrow." Page 517, she says, "Look forward to walking Talking Monday. Rest well tonight." Page 400, I thank her for everything she's done for me, and I tell her she's my best friend. She replies at 10:00 p.m., "Thank you, Brett. That is beyond sweet. Have a good night. See you tomorrow." Page 474, she sends me an unsolicited text on the weekend. She texts me on a Saturday morning with a picture of a house for sale, because she said she enjoyed helping me look for houses. There are many examples of her giving me marriage advice and even suggesting I should leave my wife. Pages 206, pages 216, pages 218, 221, pages 253, just to name a few. So regarding the city staff, there are many examples in the report of me talking about how excellent our staff is, and I'm always vocal about my appreciation for them during council meetings. There are endless examples of me telling her what an outstanding job she does for the city and asking her permission to stop by her office and meet with her. I never expect any staff member to get back to me after hours or on a weekend. I actually had a rule added to our protocol manual several years ago stating that the staff didn't have to respond to texts and emails after hours or on the weekends. A lot of people don't know this, because they judge me by how I look, but I'm actually half-Mexican on my mother's side. I grew up watching some of my family members get harassed and discriminated against because of their skin color, so I know what it looks like and how hurtful it can be. That's why I've always strived to treat everyone with respect. Again, if the city council, well, yeah, the city council can't look the public in the eye and say that they believe these allegations to be true, then it makes no logical sense for them to consider any form of limitations on my actions or behaviors. There is not one shred of evidence showing I'm a danger to the staff or anyone for that matter. You know, again, there's absolutely no possibility in resigning, and if the staff member involved wants to take responsibility for her role in the relationship, I'll consider it. I've gone through an intensive rehabilitation, and now I'm in a very strong place. All I want to do is serve my community. Thanks for listening, everybody.
So I realize that, you know, we all have, I'm sure we all have a long list of responses that we would like to make. However, the more we respond, the more he responds, and I just don't, I don't really feel like that's the direction I want to take this, or that necessarily is what the public. I think we probably all feel like we need to take a shower right now, and I don't want to continue. So I'm going to suggest that we start focusing on motions, if that's agreeable with the rest of council. All right. So we've got several opportunities, so let's just start taking them one by one. I would like to open up the discussion with my fellow council members about the idea of censure. As I said in my statement, I believe that censure will allow Brett to have more of a platform in this situation, and we will just continue to hear more statements, like the one that we heard this evening, that are both harmful to people that are victims of emotional abuse and victims of this direct investigation that are members of our city staff. And so I'd like to hear how my fellow council members think, you know, how they feel about doing a censure, but I honestly, you know, we have a lot of meetings coming up. It's budget season. We are working, I'd much rather, you know, take my time to set up a study session with the Planning Commission on the Gateway Plan, or hear from the council, the committee chairs, and work on the budget with our finance director. These are things that are much more important to the function of our city than to hear this out any further. I would really, you know, feel most comfortable putting into place, you know, beginning the process of putting into place a restraining order, ordering Councilmember Watson to follow the suggested actions, such as ceasing communication with and meetings with the complainant in a way out, in any way outside of city council meetings, cease communicating and meeting with any staff members outside of city council meetings, cease communicating with any staff members at any time regarding topics that are of a personal nature, and cease physical contact with any staff members at any time. And then also limiting his activities and removing him from his committees, as he is not a fit representative of this city. All right. So would you, Tom, would you give us a little bit of a rundown on the censure process, and what may be the, what would be the benefits? Because I think that's what we're really trying to weigh out here. You know, it's been very difficult to conduct business. I have not been able to do the same job that I was able to do several months, because I can tell you this has taken so much of our time. So, you know, I want to do whatever we can, whatever, you know, that is put into place to, for protections, but I also, I want it to, you know, to have some type of meaning and relevance. So could you let us know a little bit more about that?
Understood. A censure is a formal repudiation by the majority of the city council of the acts of a single council member. What is the difference between that and informal repudiation? As an example, each statement that was made, even by the members of the public, is an informal repudiation of the council member's action. The censure is simply a formal action. The difference being that there would be a separately agendized public meeting, and there would be certain protocols that would be in place. This is packet page 7. You'd have to provide notice to the council member of the cause of the proposed censure. You'd have to place it on an agenda for a public hearing during an open session at a city council meeting. You'd then have to provide an opportunity for public comment on the censure at the city council meeting, for which the censure has been noticed, and then you'd have to provide an opportunity for the council member to be heard regarding the censure itself. It's essentially a, think of it as almost like a mini trial, where he could defend himself and put on evidence, basically to try to repudiate the censure. It's not to say that he doesn't have a forum for that through the restraining order or otherwise. It's just actually in chambers.
But essentially, that's what just happened, right? So, I mean, we just kind of went through that, sort of, and I get it, like, it won't be formal, but we've made, we've, we had a vote of no confidence. We have all, we've publicly asked him to resign. I just don't know.
It has no teeth, and it's just another meeting that...
I just really...
...doing something useful. And so I would much rather pursue a restraining order, you know, the removal of his keys to the building and changing his code, and removing him from his assignments.
All right, so let's take them one by one.
So I have another comment. I already don't attend any of these committee meetings, because you've already removed me, or I have a scheduling conflict, so none of those listed, I attend. I haven't talked to the complaint at...
You just don't attend your committees.
No. I have talked, I have not talked to the complaint at once since December. She's actually talked to me four different times since then. I already follow all the rules you've outlined, so you're basically just going to waste tens of thousands of dollars on things that are already happening.
I think you're wasting money, keeping this going on.
I disagree.
Well... The public who we represent has made it really clear that they want us to take any and all actions. So, you know, I'm even having hesitation at not doing the censure, because I know that's what people are asking for. I just don't, I think maybe if they're hearing us and why we're hesitating on it, maybe minds could be changed. Thank you. So, yeah, let's go ahead.
I just don't want to give this any more oxygen.
No.
I want to...
Okay, great. Well, then, I would like to make a motion authorizing and directing Employment Council and staff to prepare and file an application for a restraining order with the Humboldt County Superior Court.
I second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
I'd also like to make a motion to order Watson to follow the bullet points listed on page 9 in the staff report, stating that Watson will cease communicating and meeting with the complainant in any way outside of city council meetings. Watson cease communicating and meeting with any staff members outside of city council meetings. Watson cease communicating with any staff members at any time regarding topics that are of a personal nature, and that Watson cease physical contact with any staff members at any time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
I'd also like to make a motion to limit activities by removing Councilmember Watson from the following committees as a representative of the city, including the Redwood Region Economic Development Council, the Humboldt Delmore Hazardous Materials Response Joint Powers Authority, the Humboldt County Local Community Benefit Indian Gaming Committee, the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Collaborative, the Homeless and Housing Working Group, and the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District.
I second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No.
And now, at this point, I actually would like to ask a question to council, legal council. Could you go over a little bit on the abilities for limitation of activities, because you did kind of lay out some interesting, important points about kind of basically a city that's set up the way Arcata is, a council and city manager relationship city, and how that action would work?
Actually, if I could do a point of clarification here, give me one second here. Regarding your last motion, I believe that there would actually be a slight issue with number 6. It appears that this is something that's pointed by the mayor, not the mayor.
Mayor Select.
Mayor Select. So this would need to be a different motion. You need to actually take out number 6.
No, I'll just voluntarily resign from it.
Okay, but so amended.
Thank you.
Does that work, clerk? I just said so amended, to remove number 6 from the list of activities that we are removing Councilmember Watson from.
And I believe that the record would also reflect Councilmember Watson, I don't know if this was caught. You said that you would resign from number 6, which is the North Coast...
Yes, you can add that to the record.
I'm sorry?
You can add that to the record.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
So Councilmember Watson has also resigned from the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District. Okay. Sorry, Councilmember Shaffer, you have a question?
Just could you go over a little bit about that last bullet point on there, the limitation on activities and access to city facilities? And you kind of said some things to me the other day, just about the city council and city manager government setup and how that works. So, I mean, can, can we do this? Can we change the key codes? How does that work?
Yes, so the way that this is approached by most cities is you have what is called a city council, a city manager style of city. The way in which the city is supposed to operate under normal circumstances would be that if a council member has a question, they would go to their representative within staff, which is the city manager. Through the city manager, if the city manager needs additional clarification or appointments with other staff members, the city manager is the one that controls her office. So to the extent that you are going to remove Councilmember Watson's code from the city facility, most cities, the way that this is dealt with, is that they actually do not allow any council members to have access to staff other than through the approval of... to have access to staff other than through the approval of the city manager.
Yeah, and so just to clarify for those of you that are, um, are unclear, obviously, City Hall is, is small, and, um, our, our mailboxes and such are located in the back, and most of us use a key code to go in, um, to the back door. And sometimes that's on a weekend or after hours. And I am willing to give up those privileges, you know, if that's what's going to help to make this to, to go. Um, I've been in, um, in those back offices when the door has opened and shut, and I have seen the reactions of staff wondering who's coming through that door, and, um, if it, you know, if it means me giving up my code, I'm happy to do that.
Same.
Same.
So I guess you can go ahead and motion.
Do we even need to make a motion for that, or can the city managers just do that?
Um, the city manager could do it, but it seems that this is going to be part of the restrictions that are placed on not just council member Watson, but all council members would be essentially agreeing to this, it sounds like.
Okay. So I move to limit council member access to the back city manager's office.
I second that.
Okay, a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I think I just remove key codes, right? Because that's just one door. And the key code works on other doors, so it sounds like you're just specifying one door in the building.
It would be, I think, through the motion, the way that it was presented would be to limit access to the back offices through whatever means the city manager deems appropriate. So if it's one door through key codes or if there's other things that, um, need to be done, this would be going back to the, the thing that I just discussed, which is a city council, city manager style of government. So, um, I believe what was just discussed was key codes, but yes, this would go beyond that to ensure that this is through the city manager. She controls the back office access.
So the key codes, we would still have access to the rest of City Hall?
Through the public areas of City Hall, yes.
Okay, other doors have codes on them. Other doors have codes on them too. I think just removing the key codes is a better way to go.
Okay, and, and through consultation with the city manager, I'd be removing all of them, yes.
Okay.
So I think we need a new motion.
Council, council member Watson didn't vote. He was asking for clarification, so I think he's asking for the motion to be re-stated.
I move that we limit access to private areas of City Hall that are accessible via key code?
There are no private areas in City Hall. It's a public building.
Oh, my God.
May I give, may I give a recommendation, council member?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
I'd love it.
No problem. Um, it would be a motion to approve the city manager restricting access to staff and, and any other, um, uh, city members that are not the same. Well, actually, let me restate this one more time. Now I'm getting confused here. Um, it would be a motion to remove access to staff and, and back office environment to the city council.
So moved. Second.
Sorry, Bridget.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right, now, now, welcome to our world. All right. So moving forward, this is not, um, on here, but I would like to direct staff, um, if I've got consensus, to revisit our, um, council protocols to look at, um, ways that we might avoid this in the future. There was at one point that we thought that we could hold an impeachment hearing and, um, kind of take that, um, responsibility and move forward with it, but, um, we just don't have the backing in our documents, and so I think that we, we definitely need to prevent this from happening again. So whatever we can do to bolster our documentation.
Yep, I agree with that.
And is it possible for someone to maybe tell the public if they're interested in perhaps a recall, what that would look like and how that, and how they'd go about that, including the costs, everything? Thank you.
Let me address the first thing about this. The impeachment or any kind of, uh, modification would be forward-going, just to be clear. Um, and secondly, um, regarding impeachment, this would obviously be something that'll be brought to the council for a first and second reading. It would obviously direction the staff to produce that.
Yeah, I, I know it's too late for that in this situation. I'm just, I, I just want this for situations going forward.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think when he means a first and second reading, that it would be through an ordinance in the municipal code as opposed to an amendment in the, um, city council.
Okay, well, whatever we need to do, let's, please do it correctly.
Yeah, and I just want to comment that I feel like you are being condescending to me and making fun of me because I have a learning disability. I'd like to make a formal complaint about it.
It's not because of your learning disability.
Absolutely not because of your learning disability, Brett. Absolutely not. No, no. Oh, sorry. So let's finish up with, uh, details about a recall.
Okay, and I will, um, look to the city clerk to, uh, help fill in some of the blanks, um, because she's, she's looked at the time schedule, um, of this. So a recall is initiated by the voting public. It requires, I believe it's twelve percent of the, um, voters that participated in the last general election. Is that general election? Okay, uh, so twelve percent, um, and the, so they, they have to be collected at least that many. They then get, uh, turned over to the city clerk who forwards them to the county elections office that has to verify all of the votes. Um, I don't know what the timing is for all of that, but think by the time all of the signatures are collected, the county probably turns it around in thirty to um, the county gets thirty business days, minus weekends and holidays to, um, verify the signatures. And then it can be placed on the next regular general election, or is it a special election?
It would be a special election.
It won't happen in time for the November ballot, yeah.
All right, well, I want to thank everyone for taking out a time from your busy lives to attend, and, um, we will do our best to move forward, um, considering the situation and work as hard as we possibly can for all of you. And we appreciate your support and your patience. Have a wonderful evening. Meeting adjourned.